Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's August 5th of 2021. Let's start our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Those can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just because we're half live and half virtual. Tonight, we have in attendance Howard Burgess, Jerry Sterns, Andy McCain, Sherman Hunter, Mary Beth Polley as regular members of the commission, and Norm as the alternate who is serving as a regular commissioner right now. And Jim Hall is also on the line here. So first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda.
We'll move.
One second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. No public comments, we can switch, skip that, and also no real new business that I know of. Maybe I should check with Bill. Anything come in since we last talked? So down to old business. And I think all of you got a copy of the opinion or the advice from the town attorney regarding the proposal that came in, that we got a preliminary proposal for boundary line adjustment. And it was changing the lines on four different lots. So I went back and looked at the subdivision regulations and saw that there is another category of review, and that's for re-subdivision. But the town attorney, Kevin Brown, says it's unless that is, what was his main argument there? It doesn't create any new lots. So it just changes the size of existing lots, or the lines of existing lots, so that it is a boundary line adjustment. So we got that squared away. That'll make for a simpler process, but we haven't heard much from any of the parties.
Back to them, so I can, I can let them know that now that we know, I can let them know.
Okay, okay. We might be changing the, one of the things I want to talk about is the date of the next meeting. So Bill, you know, we might not be meeting in three weeks, but we'll have that discussion a little bit later on. So any questions about that? Now, the next item is going to, we went to the select board a couple of meetings ago regarding the Conservation Commission, we've been talking about for a couple of months here. And then the more recent suggestion, suggestion that we take a look at zoning again. Whether it's a full bore or something much simpler. And, hi Dana. So yeah, so we've got seven regular members now, so none of the alternates should be voting. So, um, not the warmest reception for either one of those. And, you know, I think, I think someone mentioned that the Conservation Commission would be on hold at best. Perhaps we could come back, but as far as zoning, they weren't interested in in us proposing any language or any bylaws that would institute zoning. But that we could go through the ordinances we have, or consider new ordinances that might address some of the concerns that we've been talking about. Norm?
Well, of interest to me, and I read that article, report in the paper about three times, was something else Andy said, and something else we're working on. And I don't know whether you mentioned it, you were at the select board meeting, but Andy mentioned something about a shooting range ordinance. And was that mentioned at the board at all?
I think what we mentioned was we brought up the, that the, what had gone on in West Paulette, which did include the shooting range. But, I mean, more importantly to me, what, what matters, the fact that they, apparently that gentleman put up four buildings, which he used for part of his, his training facility. And if that happened here in Rutland Town, we'd have absolutely no, no way to stop it. Those four buildings could be updone, and, and the only thing that would happen is if he might fill in the little form and, and send it to the, send it into the town. Whether or not we could stop a shooting range or not, I have no real idea, to be honest with you. But I'd rather not have one next to my house.
Right.
Even though I'll admit to having gone to, to some, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something, I was following the situation in Paulette, because they have a zoning ordinance. And this guy just ignored everything apparently, from the newspaper reports. And I just wondered if, you know, we ought to look at that, and if the, if the select board is open to ordinances as opposed to a comprehensive zoning plan, is that something we might want to look at? And also, what does that say about the helicopter and landing strip?
Oh, well, they've.
I'm sorry?
It shouldn't have any impact, that's right Sherman, you know, they asked for that.
They asked for it.
They've been informed a number of times about it and about our progress on it. So, so doing some preliminary research, there, I think I sent you some materials that cite the 24 VSA 1971. That's, that's the statute for adoption and enforcement of ordinances and rules. So there's a lot of stuff in there. And then there's another section, 24 VSA 2291, which is miscellaneous regulatory powers. And firearms are listed there in statute, and control of firearms, and public nuisances are specifically listed in the statute there. And in fact, our stormwater ordinance was put under that one, the 2291. So I was wondering if maybe we should get someone from the, the League of Cities and Towns, BLCT, and maybe have them talk to us, probably virtually, just what kind of options we have. Describe what we're, you know, after, what's, what some of our, our issues or, or goals are for new ordinances. The select board also said, do you want to clean up the existing ordinances? Feel free to do that, too.
We asked them at one point in time, didn't we not? And they said, don't bother right now.
The new chief in town, so.
Okay, okay, good.
So yeah, anything we want to do there. We actually, there were some old flood hazard regs online that we, Bill just put the new ones, the more recent ones in.
Should we consider repealing the old ones? Or suggested they be repealed?
No, the new ones were adopted, they were just not put online. The old ones were kept online for some reason, from 1987, when the new ones were adopted in 2008. So it's new mapping, it's a lot of, there's been a lot of changes since 2008, flood hazard stuff, so.
My question is, with an old ordinance and a new ordinance, basically governing, addressing the same subject matter, it could get confusing down the line as to which one works.
Will take down the old ones and put up the new ones?
Yeah, it's just a matter of what's online. What was, it was adopted, and the latest ones were adopted in 2008. So they now supersede what was there.
The latest?
The ones that were adopted in 2008 that we put on the, the website supersede the 1987 ones.
I don't think our storm, what I was addressing specifically, or asking about, was there are some, if I understood you correctly, and with this maybe I missed, you know, but we enacted a new stormwater ordinance a couple of years ago, right?
Well, the select board did.
There was no previous one.
Right.
I understood you to say there was one, excuse me. There was a previous storm.
Okay, those are two different, two different ordinances.
Okay.
Two different topics. Flood hazard or flood zones. And, and protecting people that live in those zones.
I just wanted to be sure that we didn't have two ordinance just dated differently on the same subject matter, when the second one didn't specifically revoke the first one. But that's not, that's not the issue, because they're different subject matters.
Right.
Thank you.
So if we get someone from VLCT, what topics should they, that person maybe research ahead of time? Is there anything that specifically we, you know, we know now that we will have as questions?
So let me be clear, at least in my mind. So that the question is, given the fact that we are not supposed to take up the particular issue of zoning, but to look at what the, how ordinances could serve in lieu of zoning, what are the questions that we want to generate for the expert coming, correct? Because we're not asking the expert to talk about the cost or benefits of.
Or just. Or just to reiterate, you know, what they've already put in this, this fact sheet, right?
Yes.
What, what specifically do we want that person to talk? At this point, Andy?
One thing I should, would like to see addressed would be the amount of fill that can be brought into a property without a, without a permit. Specifically, I've seen, and, and one home in our neighborhood, they brought in, I would estimate a thousand yards of fill, give or take. There's 14 yard, 14 yard dump trucks running in, 10 a day, 12 a day. And, and built the land, built the land up 15, 20 feet over what the initial grade was. And left the side banks very, very steep. And in most places, that's not allowed to ever happen. You're only allowed to change your grade on your property, and you're, and you must keep contours within a certain percentage. But you know, the, the pitch on the hill can't be allowed to exceed a certain amount. And we don't have any control over that right now in Rutland Town. So I mean, that could, that could literally be done to anybody in any neighborhood right now.
What's the purpose of, what's the purpose of them building up the lot?
Create a plateau, rather than having land that sloped away this way. Created a straight plateau out so they could, could create parking and whatnot on it.
And the.
As I said, most, most towns regulate that to a, you have to, if you have zoning and you have a, a building ordinances, then you have to apply and, and show a site plan as to what you're going to do. And here we don't have that. And the state does not take any action on any piece of property that's not grid. The affected area has to be more than an acre before the state will take any action whatsoever. So even if they look at it and they're not happy with it, there's just nothing there they're going to do about it. Then the other thing, the other night I had fielded three phone calls. We apparently now have fireworks permits being issued again. So I, maybe Bill could fill me in on what the criteria is now. I, I thought we banned them here in town, and it's not, I'm on neither side of the issue here. I don't want to say that I'm for or against, because I'm not, I mean, one way or the other. But I just, I know a number of my neighbors are not happy.
Well, a couple of years ago, there was new legislation, and then there was a Supreme Court decision after, subsequent to that, that.
Board suspended issuing permits till they could resolve the criteria. The criteria for the permit is now what the state requires, and they've issued, we've only issued two or three, but they're all, all on the website, like.
Yeah, we saw the three issues. Yeah. Two on North Grove and one on Joshua Place.
Two states on North Grove.
Yeah.
Same address, and then the other one on Perkins Road.
Yeah, and that's the one on Joshua, it's on near Perkins, near Perkins Road. And so that affected our neighborhood, and.
So the.
So I got a few phone calls.
The criteria centers on, the, the, the permit is allowed for public displays of fireworks now.
Right, and, and so in order to be considered a public display, it has to meet certain criteria. And that's what our permit is based upon, and requires now the police and the fire chief to sign off on it. So it's just a, it's a lot more work for, for our, our staff to do, but they're, so there's not as many being issued, but there are, there are some, yeah.
And the place, CNC fireworks on Woodstock Avenue is closed. They no longer have a license through the town. But they, they have another business in Pittsburgh, and, and there's firework retailers all around. So there's no lack of a supply.
Well, at least now, if we see, if you see it on the website, and you can get in your car and go down and enjoy it, you know, and and be being blindsided. Myself, I would have been down on Perkins Lane the other night, it was a really good show, we see Parker from our house.
It's not a good show.
Mary Beth, do you want to say something? I saw a finger go up or something.
I'm good, thank you.
Any other ideas for ordinances? Maybe the firearms?
Well, this started because of the firearms and the shooting range, didn't it?
Yes.
So maybe we would ask them to give us some, at least some, some direction or some ideas of what could be done to, to mitigate that or to control it. And, and possibly what, what wasn't done in the situation we're talking about, that could have made it easier to control.
Okay. We probably should just run by our thoughts on the helipad and airstrip, just make sure we're not violating anything.
And while we're on that, let me just ask a question. Should, and I, I can't think of a reasonable, but should we be addressing hot balloons also? Hot air balloons?
That's in there, there's a reference in that.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. It says something about twice a year, hot air balloons could be put up without a permit, and, but it was very, very minimal, yeah. There was one section on it, towards the end of the, I don't know if it was in section four or outside of section four, but it was towards the end of that.
But that doesn't address the hot air balloons going up and down some other, you know, some other locations around town? Whether we want to allow for that?
Might as well to ask the VLCT if there are other communities with hot air balloon ordinances. Okay.
He has the balloon festival, they might have some restrictions or guidelines. Since they deal with it every year on a larger scale, the town of Hartford.
Okay.
Or Creechi.
Same.
Does that?
That's, I think that's in Hartford.
Oh, Creechi's.
Creechi's a village, I think, in Hartford.
Always so confusing, that Hartford stuff. Hartford, you know, what is what over there is.
You've got White River, yeah.
I think Creechi's, they're, at least the police department's saying.
Okay.
Creechi.
Thanks, I didn't know that. Well, you've got, there are several municipalities over there, probably all of which are included within the town of Hartford or somehow in there. Because you have White River, which I think is in Hartford, or is it separate?
Yes, no, Hartford encompasses White River.
That's what I thought.
It does.
And one or two others.
Yeah, well, the other one is Wilder, another one is, well, Creechi, if that's correct, so.
Yeah, I might be wrong.
There are, there are at least three or four then, if that's the case. But I think you're right, Jerry, I'd forgotten that.
I think Norwich is in that group, too.
Norwich is separate. I do know that, that's a separate municipality, have a separate agreement with, for schooling, to go to Hanover. So I, I, from the school perspective, that's how I know, that's how I know most of my stuff. It's how they run their schools.
Any other ideas? Bill, anything that you get questions about that, that you's like, I wish we had. Yeah. And what we have now is just, just, they have to, they have to let us know that they are doing some construction of residential or commercial?
Yes, anything over 100 square feet of additional property. So they're, they're remodeling inside, if you're putting a second story on, that doesn't, doesn't need any, any requirements, just expansion of more than, more than 100 square feet.
And what if they don't let you know?
The, the ordinance does have a enforcement clause for fines. But since there's no cost for the permit, there's no, you know, it's just informational, like, most people don't have a problem sending it in. But if they don't do it, we have to know about it for them not to have done it.
Right, right.
There's that, too. It's just a lot more work in the long run.
You know, where we've been over for many, many years, we've had no permitting process at all, nothing. And this is the way it's been going for, like, forever. So the, the plan is in place now, it's been very effective, even though you don't, you may not be getting 100% of everything. It's really been working, and we've been, it's, it's getting better as we go. Once people learn about it, hear about it, it's, the permitting system has been working quite well.
Working well because we're getting a good response.
Oh, good response, yeah, I mean, for so many years, we didn't need anything. People would call up and say, what do I need to do to do this, that, or the other thing? Just do it. There was no permit in place or anything. Since, I think from way back in the, it could have been way back in the 90s, early 90s or something. There was a point in time when there was an issue, when, I think when the Diamond Run Mall came or something, it was a, an issue to do with permitting, the way they were charging, and one thing or another. Somebody challenged that. Let's go back to the 90s, somebody challenged this thing. And the town clerk, Dick Elbiano, had ended up refunding money that people at that time used to pay for a permit. It was a small amount, they paid, had to return all that money to all these people. Anybody that had paid for a construction permit, all they had to do was request from the town, I want my money back. And I mean, you know, I think it was like something like $40,000 or something way back then, it was a, it was crazy. And then, and then from that point on, there was no permitting, no, nothing. But I gotta say that what we've had for the past couple of years is very effective, it's working, and, and I'm sure it'll improve.
If there's ever an opportunity to, to, through the things we do, or the, or the select board, to reiterate that those are required would be good. Because I still know tons of people in the building trades that don't think you need a thing in Rutland Town. I think it's great that it's, that you're seeing an improvement. I think that's awesome. But I think it would be good, the, any place that we could let people know that they need to do that would be helpful, I think.
That's something.
I put it on Facebook regularly.
Okay.
We talk about it board meetings, like, we do, we do talk about it.
Okay.
What's it called, the construction?
Informational building permit.
Well.
Something posted on.
Still a lot of people that don't have any.
How do you get it out?
The informational, just the use of that word tells you a lot.
It's because it's not like, because it's required, but it's not like.
Last few years.
Required to turn it in, like, it's just a, yeah.
We've been without one for, let's say, 30 years, and now it's trying to get something going again. It's been a while, but you're right, Jerry, the word really needs to get out there, because there's stuff that's going on that.
I think it's great. I think it's good that it's happening, and it's, and it just.
We just had a house go up, which, we knew there was a building permit for it, but nobody could see it or know what was going on, and all of a sudden, it's up. Tucked out of the way. That can still happen now, that can, sure.
It might be worth just sending out a notice to, or conducting a brief meeting, could be done with area builders and GCs and things like that, just so that they are, they're aware, and that might create greater awareness.
So could we add a generic building subject to the VO, the VOCT list?
Generic building?
Just give us some idea of what, what things are usually done, and we don't have to decide to do it, but at least we can talk about it.
Do you have any idea how many towns in the, how many municipalities in the state do not have zoning?
That would be a good question for them.
It's not many.
Well. Rutland, in Rutland, I know.
It's only a couple in Rutland County, I think.
Well, it's, it's almost, it's like a, almost a quarter.
How many is that?
Seven towns.
How many?
Of the 27, there's 28, but Pittsfield is.
You're talking about seven, seven towns.
I think it's about that, I think it's about that, but.
So if that, if that holds true throughout the state, then there's just, what, 250 towns? So there's, you know, 50, well, that'd be 20%, but, you know, 60 or so that don't have zoning, maybe.
And some of those 250 are like Gores.
Right, right.
Incorporated.
Right. Size of shoebox.
Doesn't even really belong in the count.
But that would be a good, that would be a good question, I think.
Just informational stuff, just to know.
And how they go about.
Yeah.
The other thing, Barbara, that I'm, I'm thinking about as we have this discussion is, what are the top 10 ordinances that most, the most municipalities have in terms of, make it top 10, top 20, whatever you want, in, in terms of helping to facilitate that?
There's got to be something in there about leash pets, right? Is that, are we talking about stuff that's even, I mean, right, that'd have to be one of the top 10, I would think. It's always, that's an, always an issue everywhere.
We have some sort of animal control.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Noise ordinance.
Right, noise is another biggie, of course.
But I mean, if they tell us, then we can compare that to what we currently have.
Which isn't much, if anything is. We don't, we don't have a no noise in ordinance at all.
I think the policy in town is that, because after 10 o'clock at night, they'll enforce it, but other than that, it's, noise can just go.
I, I wasn't saying that noise has to be a priority, I was just throwing that out.
One of those ones that's likely a top 10, right, it's likely a top 10, not that we need it.
Whatever, yeah, however we define it. Just one that pops into my mind. Well, it could be tied into, it could be tied into the.
Fireworks, right?
Fireworks. Yeah, almost anything we're talking about.
Well, that's good. We don't have to have a, you know, give this person an exhaustive list initially.
But those would be some ideas for them to look at. They might, that might actually spur them to think about other things that might be useful for us.
Yeah.
Use our time with them to brainstorm and ask for other information, so.
And what would you say are the issues that we're trying to address? And what would you say are the issues that we're trying to address in the town?
With ordinances?
With ordinances, you know, just more broad brush.
The only reason I even brought up the whole thing about when Andy and I started, I think, talking about zoning was, uh, just exactly what happened, that, that place down on, down on, um, behind the John Deere dealership kind of bailed, and wasn't a lot of that based on that, they weren't able to kind of satisfy Act fifty, am I wrong? Nothing to that.
Hadn't gotten to that point at all, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, that was the whole reason I brought up, was just simply that, the ten acre issue, so that really doesn't have anything to do with ordinances. That's why I was talking about zoning, and I get John Paul's thing, I think I read that in the paper, that he was concerned that then there's, there's a big financial, you know, uh, thing that would have to happen with the town to be able to have a zoning administrator and so forth, I get that, totally get it. I mean, I see, we don't often see the budget type stuff where we're at, you do, maybe going to the, but, so I understand his point.
Yeah, the, the, the town likes the image of having a very lean.
I, yeah, I understand that.
Budget situation.
I was never, I'm not, I, I was never saying that necessarily I was for it, it just seemed like had to be something that we should at least discuss.
And I think what you're looking for, you and Andy and others, looking for a balance between what is offered through zoning that can't be offered through
Right.
ordinance control, and if your ordinance control can be substantive enough, you may not need it.
Just seemed to me like the, the main, the main thing is that, to me, is that ten acre issue, not, the town not having any control over anything over an acre, you know, it just, it's, I understand why it hasn't gotten there, and a lot of people are against it, and I'm not necessarily for it, I think there were so many good issues, pro and con, when we talked about it ten years ago, but, um.
Well, yeah, it's, it's the town control issue as well as the expense to anyone developing, and
Right.
anything less than ten acres.
I wasn't, I, I thought that some of that had to do with Act fifty, I didn't realize it didn't, but there has been things that have come through here, many things that have been kind of stifled by Act two fifty, like the place on North Main Street. A couple of years ago, it was gonna be an auto parts or a tire place or something.
Auto repair or something.
Um, you know, they wanted them to put a sidewalk up there, and I think they finally had to draw the line, and they, they wanted that, and I think it's the Act two fifty. I think it was one of the things that kind of put the nail on the coffin, maybe not all of it, but.
One of the, one of the things that Murray Ashcroft was quoted as saying, was that if we had zoning, we would have more control over what goes on in town. But now, um, anything, because we would have control over anything under ten acres, but now, without zoning, it's anything over and.
We only have control of things under an acre.
Under an acre.
That was Jerry's point.
That was my point, yeah.
It's kind of a conundrum. Control over expense.
You can ask those questions to whoever comes in.
Yeah.
And provides us with context and recommendations.
Mary also mentioned she had been a zoning administrator at some point in her life. And she, she thought it could be done.
Bella's fault.
Okay. And, you know, it's, it may not be as expensive as, as most people think, but there is a structure you need. You know, you do need a zoning administrator, and you need, you need a board to look at those, and then you need an appeals board, and in some cases, that can be the planning, can be us. Um, but another, but there does need to be this other um, group as well, and a zoning administrator, and. So, any other ideas? Jim, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, no, excuse me, I think you covered it pretty well, um. I really think it wouldn't be a bad, bad idea to start reviewing your, the ordinances we have in place now, and, and, um, try to see if they're tailored for today's need. I think that's the first thing we should do.
Can you set the screen so that everybody appears on there?
Mary Beth is the only other one with video.
Jim's not by phone.
You know, it only shows you live video.
Well, um, yeah, Jim, um, thank you for that, I mean, it was, it was sort of an afterthought with the select board, it's like, well, why don't you take a look at the other ordinances as well? Um, and, you know, they gave us some, some rein to, um, to, to look at what we wanted to look at first. So, what does the group, what does the group think? Continue on and, and get the League of Cities and Towns here, and get some ideas, big picture ideas? Um, or just start with what we have now, and, and figure out what's working, what needs to be done, and then maybe get to the, some of the issues we've been bringing up.
Personally, I think it wouldn't be bad for them to come and educate us, and then we can look at it through the lens of what they are suggesting, and then we can look at it a little more critically.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, let's do that. So we'll do that at one of our upcoming meetings. Okay, the, um, I mean, we may want, the next thing on the agenda is the airstrip and the helipad ordinance, we may want to wait on that now.
I would think so.
Get some input from them, um, and I would encourage you, if you still have some contacts out there, um, who might provide us information, just keep those notes, and we'll we'll be using them.
Heard back from the gentleman that I had mentioned, he had, uh, like passed away, and I have not reached out again, but I will.
Could be your mid-range or long range.
I'm sorry.
It could be your mid-range or long range to-do list at this point.
One of the things that I wasn't able to share last time, because I didn't have any notes with me when I was participating at the last meeting, I think, was that, uh, one suggestion was to incorporate day use only. That would, um, preclude the need for lighted strips and things like that. And the suggestion from the person that I consulted with was, um, that, that that would help with, um, you know, regulation and disturbances to the neighbors and things like that, because you wouldn't be putting in, uh, a lot of, uh, light that would be needed for, you know, take off some landings and things like that, so. You know, and, and that would not be, that would, that could be addressed in exemptions, that if you have an emergency helicopter that needs to land for Dartmouth, for example, the Dart helicopter, then that would be excluded, but he, he, he made that one suggestion, and maybe a couple of others, but I can hold off on those. I just thought that that would be something to share at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone who has been reaching out.
Oh, he, he also said, and I don't know what we need to do, but anyone who wants to operate, uh, any type of an aircraft within five miles of an airport, um, would have to contact, uh, the appropriate, um, governing agency, so that's probably the FFA, or the FFA control tower, um, in North Clarendon, but we are probably within, I asked, within the five mile flight path?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Within five miles of the airport.
What's that?
Walls within five miles of the airport, straight line, so.
Yeah, so, anyway, that, that's another thing that he, uh, mentioned that we should be aware of as we're, as we're crafting our ordinance around that. So those are two, I thought, very helpful pieces of information I didn't know. And he's given me some other contacts, I just haven't had time to reach out.
And we might need some expertise, really, in drafting a hel- heliport or airstrip ordinance because of the existence of the airport so close.
Yeah.
And what interferes and what doesn't interfere, and what, you know, we have no expertise in that, no talent resources, so.
That's true, that's true, and, and they might, they might be willing to participate at that point.
I'm sorry.
The, the airport authorities might be willing to participate at that point. They, they don't want to start with, from scratch with us.
Right.
You know, you need this, this, and this, um, but if anything's in violation, or, you know, is, is in conflict with what they.
Before we would adopt an ordinance, we would want to have, you know, community input and invite them into.
I would think one place where the VLCT could, might be helpful to us, is it's directing us to appropriate state resources. Uh, that could help us in, in, um, not only drafting it, but with the kind of unique situation, well, we have, and I'm sure other municipalities have, of having a local airport. And ours is probably the busiest outside of Burlington.
State didn't really want anything to do with that, though. State didn't want anything to do with that. I mean, am I, am I wrong? He, he was, he was making.
Started all this from the transportation boards, and then, well, that's, that's your.
That's right.
You figure it out.
You should think about this, but it's on, you're on your own, they didn't want anything to do with it.
And then the airport said, you know, no, that's, that's not part of our world.
I mean, to me, it seems like we should, we should do the best we can to put an ordinance together, and, and, uh, just move forward with it, I, I can't imagine that anything that we would do would, it's not gonna, the, the state airspace around that is gonna be supersede anything we do anyway.
Right.
So, I think we forge forward and.
And I did get a bit of an explanation, the airport won't talk to us because they are governed by money, just in transportation.
Yes.
So, I mean.
Right, right.
It's like talking to the same entity, they.
Right.
They can't advise us, so.
You would think those would be the people that would really want to talk to you, so that you get it right.
Yeah.
They should know how this should all be, and.
But there are also aviation groups, and that's what my contact, uh, told me, that know those regulations, because they work with towers and the FFA, FFA, FAA, and so whether that's drone operations, or whether it's actual, um, physical piloting of, uh, aircraft, um, those folks are very knowledgeable, and so they would be able to provide us.
There must be an association of.
There are.
Private pilots.
Yep.
And that kind of thing, that that's the kind of resource I was thinking about.
Well, you mentioned state, that's why I brought it up, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 I, I think I did, but uh, I think we, it's just, it could be just a you could be spending a lot of time, and then bumping into stuff that we're not informed.
We already have. Think we already have.
Brand new territory.
I can't imagine, there's one ordinance, so let's, let's not tackle ten. Be a long process.
Well, I mean, anything else, just just about anything else, there's probably precedence for, and probably examples.
Right.
That would be a whole lot easier.
So, did we talk about, can we have?
Yeah, we did go through that quickly, um, and Kevin Brown's.
I read his.
Yeah. So now we're just waiting to see if they're gonna really, you know, when, what they want to follow through on here. We haven't heard anything from the, the landowners up there. In a couple, couple months now.
Yeah, we, we told them that we had to reach out to Kevin, so, yeah, yeah, so, he, he's waiting for us.
He was, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um, next, uh, Mary Beth, you want to tell us a little bit of the work you've been doing, um, on a grant for the town, just describe that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, so, uh, in early, I don't know, mid-July, uh, the state announced a grant um, opportunity for all towns and nonprofits in Vermont, and it's related to the COVID funding, and it's specifically for recreation, so statewide, there's six million dollars available, um, for improvements, and so I just forwarded that along to Byron, um, and, um, Barbara, just saying, just so the town is aware of it, and then we looped in Mike Rowe, and, um, he manages the, um, Northwood Park, um, the rec director, and so he's been working with some residents who have been proposing, um, improvements at Northwood Park, so uh, another disc golf area, mountain bike trails, um, the town's already working on the shared use path, um, that's in permit, permitting, so there are a bunch of different ideas brought by residents that were already being discussed. Um, so Mike and I have been putting together a grant application, and I think he just brought it to the select board on Tuesday, and they gave it the go-ahead, um.
That was for the letter of intent, right?
For the letter of intent, yep, which is. Yep, which is due the end of August, um, so that's why it's kind of a a quick thing that we're trying to do, but right now, all they're looking for is what the town is interested in doing, and about how much it would cost, and then they're gonna look at all of the letters of intent and invite certain groups to apply. Um, and that would happen in late September, they would let towns know if they're interested in getting a full application from you, because they're trying to prevent people from spending a lot of time on this full application, um, if they're not gonna be considered anyway, um, so, um, I think, well, now that the select board has approved it, um, I think they're planning to, uh, submit it next week, and then, like I said, we'll find out by the end of September if they want to hear more about the projects that we're proposing. Um, if it might possibly be funded.
So Mary Beth, what does VORAC stand for? I'm assuming REC is Recreation, but what's VO?
Yep, so it's the Vermont Outdoor Recreation, um, Coalition, I think it is, and it's the Department of Environmental Conservation, and the ACCD, which is the, um, marketing, tourism, um, economic, um, development branch, and they work together, work together to put this grant, um, out there, and it, it has been offered in previous years, like, they offered it last year, but there wasn't nearly this amount of funding that went into it, and it's specifically geared for outdoor recreation, health and wellness, getting more people outside, um, and utilizing trails, and, um, um, so there can be part of it a built environment, but they're really focused on trails and getting people, um, outside recreating.
And what did you say the total amount was?
So, the proposal we're putting out is two hundred thousand, and that's just the different proposals that, um, there are six different proposals, and, um, I could send out the letter, it's not final yet, we're still working on it, but, um, could send it out, so you guys could take a look.
So of the two hundred thousand, six proposals, actually make that up?
Yes. Yep.
Does that include the pickleball?
Yes, yep, and a fitness course, and, um, yep. And then the shared use path, which, um, is already kind of funded, but you know, if, if we can get state funding, then that can be used for another project. Um, because the way this grant works, um, you find out, um, over the winter whether you have the grant or not, but even if you put in the project this fall, you can still get reimbursed for it later.
And how much total money is available, did you say, from ACCD?
Um, so it's, there's six million dollars, but five million is in the VORAC, and then there's a separate, like, smaller trails-only grant that, um, has a one million dollar. Um, okay, and they they are prioritizing projects that involve multiple towns and multiple groups, um, so ours, because it's only the town, um, might get a little bit less points, but we're kind of showing that by increasing um, the number of activities people can do, and spending more time at the park. and spending more time at the park, you can attract visitors who are gonna spend money at local restaurants, um, cuz the economic impact is another big part of the program. They wanna be helping communities and, um, showing how it can work between communities and different projects can benefit different areas.
Yeah, great.
There's no, no match to the money.
That's good.
That's right. And they probably want a pretty good geographical spread around the state, you would think.
They did say that, that that's gonna be a component. You wanna spread it, the money out throughout the state.
Yes.
Mary Beth, was there anything about Dewey's Ball Field? Anything for that?
Um, no, but Barbara and I, we talked about the part, the pocket park. Dewey Avenue, there's just, there's a lot going on in Center Rutland. We have the, you know, there's the um, bike path. There are a lot of opportunities, but it's, you know, the grant, it's only a few weeks and a lot of those are in the earlier stages of planning. And they really wanted things that either don't require permitting, or the permitting's already all set. And they want things that are ready to go in the ground right now. Um, so they're, so they, um, but do you have ideas for Dewey Field? Cuz I would love, you know, to do something at some point.
There was some interest, uh, a year or so ago, they, they need to create more parking for one thing. They have a real parking issue, uh, where everybody has to park on the street and it's, and you know, that's just one thing. There were some other plans for that. There was a lot of interest at one point, and I guess it didn't happen, so it's maybe been just dropped.
Yeah, Mike Rowe hasn't mentioned much of that stuff recently.
Well, I was thinking, so they, even though there won't be as much money available, they are planning to have the grant next year. And I was thinking, well, there's the pocket park and the improvements that we're already proposing there. Um, and then just working with West Rutland, you know, there's a joint study that was done and um, I think there's a lot of opportunity in Center Rutland with Dewey Field and, um, just tie, tying everything together to make that a walkable area. But it just seemed like a, a project that was a little too big for right now. And I don't the way that this is set up, it's like, like fifty thousand dollar minimum, like they don't wanna fund a project that just has like parking improvements or things like that. So we'd have to do, have multiple pieces if it was gonna have a chance.
If you're gonna add parking, you would have to add it to some other bigger project as a, uh, as a mitigation measure for uh, for use and for visitors to come and be able to, yeah.
Like if you put.
Yeah.
Like if you put trails there, I know it's a small park, but um, if something was proposed where, um, you know, lead to a, like hiking trail or something, then I think it would have a better or if you could tie it to the pocket park, cuz you could walk from the pocket park to Dewey Fields um, and link them somehow, but, um.
Okay, Mary Beth, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. And, and um, thank you for taking the lead on this. Um, with you and, and you know, you didn't mean to circumvent the planning commission. You, you, you saw this grant opportunity and then you, you started talking to other town officials. Um, so you're doing this pretty much on your own as a or are you doing this for your work?
No, so Mike actually asked me for help because um, he hasn't applied for grants and I don't have a lot of experience with them either, but he started a uh, Google Doc um, that we've been working on together and with um, Byron had input and has been talking. This is a very quick thing, like the last week or two, um, just kind of, um, happened like right before, really, we talked to the select board, um, and it just has this deadline that's coming up, so. But there is still time, if you guys have other ideas or think that, um, you know, there's something else that we could, should look at. Um, we're definitely open to suggestions, like we brought it, um, Andy McMillan put in the um, golf course that's there now, and he's helping out with the golf course part, um. So there's definitely, um, and another town resident, um, has been, um, interested in getting the mountain bike trails put in, and he's been helping with that part of the project and getting quotes and, um, so I, if anyone wants to help or has other ideas, feel free to reach out and I can talk to Mike about it. Um, I think he's officially the lead and I'm just kind of helping out.
So yeah, do share with us the letter of intent.
Okay.
And and other materials as we, we get further along.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good work, Mary Beth.
Thanks.
You know, if you get this, you, you get a reputation that you are able to get grants and they'll just the ask will just keep on coming. Okay, um, let's see, a couple more things I, I would like to mention here in the announcements, um, the last, well, it'll last couple of select board meetings, um, going back a couple of months, the issue of the mall and security have come up there and it just keeps, it, it seems, according to the police chief, it just um, is just getting worse. Uh, it seems like just inside, um, gla- I mean, every piece of glass has been broken, among other things. The doors, you can't even lock them anymore. They've been broken into and so many times. So the up, the upshot is, you know, we, there's, the select board is trying to keep a dialogue going with the mall owners and the police chief would like, you know, security up there at least twice a day, um, morning and night, if not more often, so that's what that is.
Doesn't the mall have any interest in protecting its asset?
You would think.
You think, but I mean, that's what popped into my mind.
Yeah, and, and I guess a lot of the activities at night and there's like skateboarding going on inside. Right, isn't it? So.
It's a liability too for them, is it not?
You think so?
Maybe I just I'm a little off-center, so.
Has there been any progress on what the plans are to rejuvenate that place?
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that was the real impetus for the discussions with the developers. Um, and you know, they would come every so often and say, oh yeah, we got all these plans and, and, um, but no one signed on the dotted line yet. So there'd be, Mary would ask them to come back in thirty days and you know, so this is like an ongoing non-discussion almost. Um, I mean, there's, there's nothing, you know, really finalized there. And in the meantime, you know, the police department just keeps recording all of these problems up there and those just keep escalating. So at the last select board meeting, they, they they moved to, to ask for a security detail up there um, at least twice a day. So we'll see where that goes. And they hope to have, you know, the, the people who are in charge of making the development plans come to the board at some point and actually detail their, their plans. Any other comments for, for the record here?
It's pretty sad because I think they they had a lot to do with BJ's not coming. They were, they were fighting BJ's who had really were developing a plan to, you know, construct next to the Holiday Inn. And there was friction between the mall and I think the mall wanted BJ's to be up at the mall, so in the end, we ended up with nothing. The mall had, had something to do with, they were, they were opposing BJ's, so.
Were they thinking that, that BJ's would take up space up there and not have to build a separate structure?
I don't think BJ's was interested in playing up there.
BJ wasn't interested. I think is what it was. They, they wanted BJ's to drop their plans and move up, I think move up to their site and.
As a, as a tenant or resident.
Yeah, and in the end, we got nothing.
Why couldn't BJ's move forward with the project, the way it was outlined?
I don't know all the details, but it was, uh, I, I don't know. But, but the, the rumor was that the mall folks were opposed to it.
So what?
But there was, there was, there was something about the process that the mall had to go through in order to get there, and it had something to do with the city. They were and impact fees, it had to do with, they were saying to BJ's, well, if we pay these impact fees and then they also have to pay them, you remember that? Something about that? And BJ's, I think, finally said, it, it had something to do with previous things that the mall was required to do. The mall was pushing to make sure BJ's had to do them if they did their standalone. And that was like leverage to try to bring them up to the mall and it didn't happen and it just fell apart. Something like that.
And the irony is, uh, the person who's the head of Act Two Fifty in this area said, you know, the project was ready to go.
Right.
You know.
Said what?
Project was all set and ready to go.
Yeah, but they were not going to object to the project. BJ, you know, they hadn't crossed all their Ts and done all their Is and.
They would have sailed through Act Two Fifty, BJ's.
It sounded that way.
That's unfortunate.
So that's the latest on the mall.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I also wanna talk about the next meeting. Um, it's scheduled for the twenty-sixth, which I cannot make. Are we okay? I don't think we're under any rush by anyone looking for a permit of any type. Um, we okay pushing it out another week? It's not the greatest time, um, just before the Labor Day weekend, but September second. Instead of the twenty-sixth.
I just wanna throw this out. It's kind of ironic. We have a, we have our annual meeting of our fire district, and so we moved it to the twenty-sixth. So that we, the building would be, we knew the building would be open for the planning commission.
Thank you, thanks, Andy. Oh, boy.
You moved it from this building to another location?
And we can't move that to twenty-sixth. It's gotta stay cuz we've warned, we've warned it now.
Right.
So we made it so I didn't have to come back another night.
Okay. Well, hi, chief. Okay.
How much, how much do we need to cover that night and what's on the radar screen?
Well, I think maybe the Clery Boundary Line Adjustment, maybe I, it's hard to tell.
He was gonna get the surveyor working on it, but they weren't sure what, what the surveyor, when they could get to it, so I, I don't, I don't have any status on it yet.
Yeah.
Because it could be a very short meeting, anyway.
Maybe VLCT.
Yep. Well, I mean, you could schedule that.
Can we schedule that off for September? Certainly, we have some, some impact as to when VLCT would come.
Somebody has business to bring before the planning commission. That's six weeks, and so that's.
We could call a meeting if that happens. So if we waited, it would be the sixteenth. Right? Of September, so.
Yeah.
Going from the fifth of August to the sixteenth.
How late can we cancel the twenty-sixth meeting? In other words, if, if we wait and see there's no, nothing coming before us, what is the last date that we can cancel it? Okay.
Forty-eight hours, right?
Twenty-fourth?
Forty-eight.
Yeah.
Forty-eight hours.
No, you said the twenty-fourth. And you said, I, I you can always do an emergency one, but yeah, it's. Okay, so we'll wait until twenty-fourth.
We can also cover for it, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, i- if there's nothing major that's gonna require a lot of you know, input and something needs to get done just for procedural purposes. I think I can cover that.
Okay, you, you will be here if we have to do the twenty-sixth.
Yep. But if there's nothing on the agenda, like Bill will know on the twenty-fourth and then nobody, well, Bill still has to come up against.
The other, other side of it is, there doesn't seem to be any emergency or rush with the Clery project. There's nothing.
Yeah.
So if we.
Right, no, no transaction or no.
Yeah, there's no transaction.
No mortgages or.
Bunch of deeds have to change hands, but.
Okay. Got it, so stay tuned.
So are we, I, I don't know what we decided, I'm sorry. We decided, did we decide that on the twenty-fourth, we will know whether or not we're meeting on the twenty-sixth, will be notified instead of?
Well, either Bill will send out the information for our updated uh, meeting agenda, or he'll cancel the meeting, I'm assuming, but.
And I may just have that discussion with you Friday before, we'll figure it out.
And if you need me to cover, just let me know, we'll connect.
Okay. Okay. Now, one remaining thing, the minutes from July fifteenth.
Move to approve.
Can I, well, always start. And I don't know whether, I just wanted to bring up one point. And we have down in, in number four, the motion passed seven to one. And I kinda thought maybe we should discuss how we should clarify putting our votes down i- in the minutes. It, to me, either we should have it that, if the vote passed, it could be six to one or it could be seven zero. Or we could do it that way and then say, and then the alternates vote, the alternates voted such and such a way. In other words, we should clarify it. I don't think we should have a vote of seven to one or a seven, when we're a seven-member board. Norman, if you would, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I spoke to Jim about it. Uh, we seem to run into each other at the grocery store every other day. But I noticed it and I spoke to Barbara also, um, just seems to me that there's just some confusion as to who was voting and who wasn't. The alternates don't vote at all if we're not sitting like tonight. We have no vote, and we shouldn't vote. Um, and I think there was a little bit of confusion cuz somebody came in late to the meeting, so, uh, and there were two people missing at the beginning, so both Jim and I voted. Um, but I think we just ought to say that but I don't recall, do we usually put the, the tally or we just say it passed?
No, I think we normally, we put the tally, but I, I'm not trying to find fault here. I'm just saying, we just wanna have a way, I mean, the, the alternates sit and they listen to everything going on, so they should really have some input. I mean, one way or the other, their, their vote should be recorded, even if it, even if they didn't count. I mean, it does show intent of the board.
Well, I, I, I think that's inexact. Um, the alternates have a specific statutory position, and we only vote. I mean, I'd like, you know, I'm speaking against myself, but I think in, in a sense, but I think we only vote when we're called on the vote. Any other vote is null and void. Doesn't exist. Doesn't exist because we're not empowered to vote. So I just think either i- if this happens again, which hopefully will be more cautious in the future.
Right.
Um you still should only record the votes without the alternates because they're not authorized to vote under any circumstances and.
And I think your concerns, Andy, could be addressed by um the discussion. You know, if the alternates join the discussion and, you know, offer some opinions and certain things.
Yeah, I'm I'm
Could show up in the record.
I just thought we we should have a a clear way that we're going to record them. I remember like the other night at the select board meeting, you got asked and then got polled as to how the alternates voted also, I as I believe how the how the, you know.
Surprised.
That's all. So really, yes, what what I'm gathering, everybody thinks is that if we just record the the vote of the seven voting members, whoever they are, and that's that and and okay, I mean, I
Normally, under Robert's rules, if it's if everybody votes in favor, it's just passed unanimously and we don't record it, that's that's how I do it, yeah. If if there is a split decision, then the vote is passed with the split decision results recorded.
That's where this is like.
And the problem that I noticed, what, well, the other thing is, is that normally a chair will not vote except to break, make or break a tie. And the purpose behind that is that if you make a tie, the motion fails. If you break a tie, then you actually put it in favor or against whatever the motion was. So to Andy's point, it should never reflect more than a six. I mean, if it's passed unanimously, you don't say what the what the vote is. And if you do have a split decision, it shouldn't go beyond six unless it's three to three and the vote cast and the
That's fine. So what would be helpful then is if you want to vote on something, then state the vote passes X to X or whatever.
Yeah.
And then that can be the record because otherwise it's just, it's difficult to interpret. So if it's stated every time, that eliminates the question.
Yeah.
And I want to double check Robert's rules. I mean, I think in small groups, the chair can vote. And and can be recorded.
That is what you mentioned. I remember you stating that at one meeting, that now the chair does can vote.
Yeah, and I'll look up that citation. I know the select board, the the chair.
Yeah, and I I do know
The board operates on Robert's rules.
What do they operate under?
I I remember, I just had a discussion come up in the past that I don't believe the select board operates under Robert's rules of order.
Okay, well, I'll check.
operates statutorily to do so?
Do we?
No.
No.
My experience is on the school side and after. That's statutorily provided, so I I thought that that was the case for municipalities too, but I don't know. The other question, Barbara, that you raise is what constitutes a small board? And I'm not sure that seven members is
I thought it was like on twenty or under.
Ooh, okay.
I'll double check.
Do we operate under Robert's rules?
Yes.
We do?
We try.
I I know we we talk about it all the time, but is there some specific requirement uh by state statute or by municipal fiat or whatever that we uh proceed by Robert's rules?
I don't know about the state statute requiring it. I think there's an option to use other rules, but I'll double check that too.
Well, if I heard
It's just historically, it's just traditional for the planning commission.
That's an important topic and you should check into it and let's let's get it resolved. I mean, one way or the other, let's let's do it. Yeah, so we know.
As to when you vote, basically, when the chair votes is the question.
Yeah.
I didn't know I was opening such a can, actually.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, so back to the minutes, so the the votes, both votes um should be adjusted.
Right.
And
This one, excuse me, under new business, uh paragraph two, there was a six to two vote and there was a and the other one, seven to one on on the second page. So I think that
Let's stick for these minutes with the chair voting until we are, do we find out that that's not, should not be the case. So what what is that first vote? What should it be? This is on the zoning.
I think six to one because, Jim, did you vote no on that?
I did. I voted no on that.
And Jim did also, I believe.
Yeah, did he?
Yeah, I think
Is he still with us?
Is he still, yeah.
Jimmy, you there?
Yes, yes, I voted uh as a as a one. I guess I don't have to explain the reasons for it, but I went through I I was the lonely one that voted no.
We're talking about the zoning regulation.
I'm talking about zoning right now.
Right.
And that vote was registered as six to two.
And you were here at that point, right?
I was here.
Okay.
So that probably shouldn't be
I wasn't here, I was up there.
Right.
I I voted against it.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
And so should it be six one? Was Jim, because Jim was an alternate, so it should be six, six to one.
Yes, because at that point, all seven regular members were here. And so the other vote on page two, old business number four, that's for the conservation commission. And I think, Jim, you were the only one that voted against that?
Yes.
So
So that should have been a unanimous fact.
Yeah.
Because Jim was a second alternate, because I was not here.
Correct, right, yes.
So Norm was here, so he was for first alternate, so he was voting. So it's only Jim's that we need to address, right, his votes.
So that motion passed unanimously. On page two.
Yes.
I have a typo on the new business. Uh discussion has an extra I in it, I think.
Which line?
On new business, earlier discussion.
Oh, right at the title.
Right in the title.
I O I N.
Where is this?
This 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 I O N.
The underlined title for new business.
This is a typo.
I will.
Then under old business, at the bottom of the page, uh stormwater ordinance, we need to have, has become have. Updates.
You're channeling Norm tonight.
Yeah, I
Where was this one at the bottom of page one?
Number one, old business revision of stormwater ordinance, number one.
To the map has been done.
Have. Happened on, yes.
Yep.
You're on a roll, Dan.
Page two, old business, top of the page, uh item one, vote on requesting a town conservation commission. Uh second line of one, conservation, well, there's something, either an S's mission from conservation commissions. I think that's what is missing. Uh their conservation commissions, this is the title there, it's supposed to be S.
Read that a hundred times.
And my final observation, number five, under that same section towards the bottom, bottom third, discussed adding it to the town plan. Uh I think that period's supposed to come out and that's supposed to be a continuous sentence. Uh discussed adding it to the town plan the next time it comes up. I think it was just, saw the period it capitalized autocorrect, so.
If you do that, though, you got to change something else. Because it wouldn't say is two thousand twenty-five, it would say in two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, sorry, it's supposed to be in, oh, wait, like time.
Now that's channeling Norm right there.
The next
It should be in.
Oh, that's supposed to be comes up, sorry. I made the correction in my head but didn't write it on my paper.
No, I think it's, next time it come, it is up for review is two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, but discussed adding it to the town plan the next time it comes up for review in twenty twenty-five, that's what.
No, it's, you discussed it adding to the sound plan. It said, the next time it is up for review is twenty twenty-five, but it could be done anytime.
Yeah, I like the way it is.
Okay, yeah, I don't have
Discuss it, then you then you said, the next time it's up for review is twenty twenty-five.
Yep, I stand corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, no changes.
Yeah, but it in the first sentence is ambiguous, you have to
Nice defense, Bill.
Good job, Bill. I take it on a persona that's not normally my own, so I need to be
You you now face this with the select board now too, so you you're like, you're primed.
Sorry, Bill. I will modify my motion to accept uh the minutes as corrected. And I'll continue the second one.
Good. And for the discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes since July fifteenth with the changes we just mentioned, please say aye.
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 I have seen it here.
Opposed. Anything else?
Regis is an interesting point. I voted, was an active alternate at the last meeting. But do I vote on the minutes because even though I'm not active at this meeting, never mind.
The numbers wouldn't be, but if you did vote, the numbers would still be consistent because there's one
Yeah, there's one abst-
Yeah, be abstained, so I should vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't
No, you don't vote.
I don't vote.
No, because it was passed with one abstention and that's Jerry. The other five or six of us have affirmed
Right, right.
Passed unanimously with one abstention.
I didn't mean to open up a can of worms, it just did seem like an odd thing.
We're living in minutia tonight.
Yeah. You are.
Time to go home.
Yeah.
Well, it was out of motion, thanks, hey.
All right. So ruled. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mary Beth. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.